Nine o'clock, we have Sheriff Toth kind of update meeting and discussions.
Yeah, I need you to sign something, but I guess I didn't have to put it on the agenda according to the Secretary of the Trade or whatever her position is still. You guys approved the new 911 stuff, and I just forgot to have you sign. So that they could start. They came and looked the other day, and then the guy's like, soon as you sign this, then we get it back. It'll be take 120 days or less to get all their new equipment ordered and installed.
Okay, yeah, we already approved that, it's basically administrative, so yeah.
Right, so it just needs to be.
Do we need all three of us to sign?
No, just one of it.
One person?
And then, of course, I'll scan it and get it to you guys.
Okay.
Because I gotta scan and send it to them.
Will I be able to get that document from you today?
Which, this one?
The one I'm signing, yeah.
I don't got a secretary. I try to work as fast as I can to get stuff to you. But yeah.
Okay, I didn't get to look at it, but does it need a signature from the company that you're signing with?
No, he signs it and I sign it.
Okay, very good.
Oh, where do you sign it? Because I just signed it.
I think there's two spots, isn't there?
One says customer representative, and one says customer signature.
I think customer's you, and I'm probably the representative.
Okay.
I don't know, sign them both, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
As long as somebody signs it.
So I can write down, I just need the title of the thing, so I can know what he's signing.
Don't let me forget, out in my pickup, I have an envelope, I think that goes to Andy, it's about the junk vehicle. I picked it up here the other day.
Madam Secretary, there's that.
Okay. You got the title, right? I guess it's just the 911 contract with Lumen.
Lumen, yep.
Oh, maybe you do just write your name up there. Yeah. Maybe you just write Roman Zalawy.
Oh, oh, they want me to have it printed.
Maybe that's what that is now.
A printed name and a signature.
Well, do you not want to print my name?
Hey, I don't want to get in trouble.
You don't know how to spell Zalawy, that's what it is.
Yeah, Z-Y-L-A-W-Y.
Well, very good.
You gotta memorize it.
Very good Sheriff Too, I mean Toth.
It's also right in front of me.
So is it the 247 plus the 7,0687?
So the total is the...
This is the grand total price to customer.
After the years, the first year, this first year will pay this instead of the...
Oh, okay.
And then after that, it's this every year.
Right, oh, I see.
For like five years, which totals.
Okay, which totals this?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow, okay, so five-year contract.
I believe that's what it is.
Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, but we went with the five-year because not the seven or not the three, but...
Yeah, I believe.
The interest rate was pretty low, and by that time, the car's gonna have probably just under 100,000 miles, and it'll be ours.
No, these, this is...
Oh, this is the 911, yeah.
But I did get, speaking of which, a bill yesterday, the first payment bill, which is due July 1, for the car, for the first cars. Well, this budget of mine, so what do we do with it?
The excess revenue that you thought you would be spending on that, you mean? Say that again.
So...
Said he isn't budgeted this year.
Remember? Or I guess, am I wrong? We've got, so it's $69,000, it's the first bill of the cars, came in, it's due July 1.
Yeah, so that's a different budget here.
Right. So do we just hold that until, how do you want me to do it? I mean, it's due July 1.
Oh, I see.
So next meeting, we'll put it on, and I'll bring it in.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda, bring it in.
Because, yeah.
I just got it yesterday.
Because the new budget takes effect July 1, and they're gonna need it by July 1, so we're gonna have to try to get a, an adjustment in an account, so that we can get the check in the mail before it's too late.
Correct.
And then get it back filled with the new budget.
So I'll just have, I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, and then we can figure out.
Because that might, yeah.
Because I just came yesterday, and I was like, oh shit. Because I was like, I can't have Wayne just fill out a thing and send it out.
Yeah, right.
Till we talk to you guys.
Yeah, can't bounce a check.
I didn't get that on my credit card.
No? Credit card doesn't have a limit that high?
Oh, you guys tapped me off.
Oh geez.
Terrible. All right, well, thanks for doing that. We'll get, and I'll get that scanned, and when I scan it for them, I'll, you want the original? I'll bring the original to you.
Yep, thank you.
And then jail date, I think we're down to like, we might be nine or 10 now. We just took two from DOC back in, but they're only gonna, they said they'll only be here like five to 10 days, and they'll be out. Most of our people are DOC right now. I think we only have one or two that are ours. The rest are being paid for by DOC. And a California guy with warrant, but they don't pay daily, but they pay his medical. He had to get some meds or something.
What do you mean, they don't pay daily?
So when we arrest somebody on warrant, we found out
Yeah.
That, just like when we, if they arrest one of our guys, they don't charge us their daily rate. So it's kind of an unwritten rule, we called Shauna to confirm this, and she's like, yeah, you don't charge them to house their, unless they're like dragging their feet to come get them. I guess you give them like kind of a 10-day
Right.
window, and if they're dragging their feet, then you start charging them because, but it's kind of a, they do that for us.
Take care of our, our renegade, we'll take care of yours, just come get them.
Except for medical. They have to pay for the medical, so. And so, because I was like, what? And then we called Shauna, and she's like, yeah, no, you don't charge, so. That's out of state, people.
Right.
I think in-state, I think we charge them. So, I don't know, we'll have to figure it out. The Marshals were still waiting for them to send us a contract. We're just going through the, it's up at DC, and they're going through all of our stuff. We had to send them a evacuation plan, how we'd do that, the medical. They're fine now that we have a deal with the, not the hospital, but the clinic. So they were fine with that, so. And they're just waiting for the green light for that, and they're gonna only start up, start us off at like 3:00, maybe 3:00 to 5:00 at the most at first, just to see, get it smooth. One of our girls, our one girl, Officer Scott, is in Missoula going through training right now for the two weeks, so.
Oh, with the Missoula jail?
Mm-hmm. So she's over there, she got one more week, and she'll be back. And then she'll have all the same training everybody else had. And then we're still waiting for beds at the academy for them, so. The new camera system, again, I'm kind of waiting. I would have liked to, we have some money in reserve, but I want to wait, because if we get the one contract with the feds, they said they're gonna throw us extra money for improvements, so that's why I'm kind of waiting on some of this, because they may pay for it, so why should we? So, see if they really are gonna put their money where their mouth is when they said that, so I'm kind of waiting. But it's, for all the cameras, including your cameras in all ways, all the cameras in the jail, plus adding cameras that the Marshals wanted into day rooms, plus the door access, plus the door accesses, entry, $29,180, $89,000. I thought it was a lot less than I thought it was gonna be.
I couldn't hear that, $29,189.
And the Marshall contract is gonna include, this is the one that they might...
So the big, so the normal contract is kind of like we have with DOC. If we bring people out, we bring people in, this is the way he charges. But then they have the other contract that they're trying to get us on, which is, we guarantee him 10 beds, and then they, it's called a cap, it's a 15-year contract, and then they said they will throw, the guy described it as, we will give you money for improvements of your jail. Whatever you need, you tell us what you need, and we'll give you the money.
So that's the one he's working on currently?
That's what they're trying to get us to pass on. So, but we're a small jail, so we'll see.
With need of improvements.
Right.
Speaking of contracts, where are we sitting with the highway patrol?
I guess he's, I don't know, I haven't seen him pack any boxes up yet. They told me they're waiting for Jasper to clean up that building or something.
Wasn't Ellen supposed to do a short-term contract or something, or?
Yeah, and he was supposed to start paying 500, 500 bucks. Have Ellen write him a letter, and I was like...
Conviction notice.
Yeah. I was kind of in the, I was being ignored for a while, but then I went in and said, hey, you know, this ain't personal, you know, we just don't need to be grumpy about each other, let's just keep moving forward.
Together.
You know? But I was gonna say on this thing, the only thing, maybe I was gonna have them pull out the price of the door entry and just see how much that is, because I almost would like that sooner than later, and get rid of the keys, because like with employees leaving and all that, it's a pain to track down keys, and especially with the high, if the high patrol leaves, they have dozens of our keys out there, patrolmen do, and I'd like to just end all that, because I guarantee they're not gonna give us keys to the new place. So, I'd like to get that secured and then, and that, which would also be that one room. So I'll see what it is, and if it's like, I can't imagine, if it's all $29,000 for all those cameras and the doors, it shouldn't be that much for the doors. But maybe pull that out separate and us pay for that, and just get the doors done sooner than later. But, and then we've got a dispatch opening Brandon put in his two weeks, a certain dispatcher put in his two weeks, and said he just misses Idaho and didn't think he could be a supervisor, thought he could handle it, but little, he's having a hard time being forceful with people when he needs to.
Yeah, it's not always that easy.
No, it's not. So my plan, just so you guys know, is not to make one supervisor. I was gonna put one dispatch in charge of the schedule, and another one kind of in charge of training. And the one doing the schedule will do civil too and stuff like that. So I'll come with an agenda and more idea on how we want to do that, and see if that'll work. But everyone's working good right now together so far. But now we gotta get a new one. So we gotta advertise for a new one.
How are we on detention officers?
We got, we've got six, we hired a sixth one, and then so, and then we've got an application for a seventh one. But this past two weeks has been so crazy, I was, when it comes down, I was gonna get with HR and get an interview scheduled for the seventh guy. And he seemed like, his application looked fine, but we'll bring him in and interview him and get him. And then we'll do a thing for dispatch, and then we're gonna need, I need, I need the new deputy position. Because that became official on the 12th.
Okay.
So I need to, and we already do have one application for that, from Wheatland County Sheriff's Office.
Where is that?
He's coming. We just sent it to him. He's getting mailed it in.
So we don't have it yet, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I think, where is Wheatland?
Me and Wayne have, we've, yeah, he'll come. Should be here any day now.
It's in the mail.
He's at the academy, he graduates like June 2nd or something like that.
Oh, cool.
Wheatland won't be very happy. But I don't know, we'd have to interview him and take apps and see who else puts in, but he's the one, that's, at least he's pre-service and through the academy, so. So at least it would be, probably the search wouldn't be too long. And the one other new hire, newest hire, is really impressing all the deputies, and he is actually turning out to be a really good hire that we hired. Like, really good.
Good.
Very impressive. Squirt away, yeah. No. So if I can advertise dispatch, we're still advertising jailer, but we haven't, we only got the other one. And then deputy, I guess, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah.
The dispatch put it out over teletype, even though they don't do that anymore, or whatever it's called now.
I remember, it's like a typewriter thing, and the little ticket, and you run it through.
Telegraph.
Yeah.
Well, I wrote my first tick, traffic tick the other day. That won't happen again. We're going to, we're trying to get with ADSI, which is our CAD system, and get with Sanders County and go with e-tickets, so it's like the high patrol does, it's a printed-off thing. You don't have to write anything, you just scan their ID. It took me a long time to write that ticket out, and I can't even read it, barely. I was embarrassed, I was like, oh my God, so.
Do you need to make a motion to...
Yeah, I should have, I had been. And I was like, oh, those boxes are so small, I'm like, I don't remember them being this small.
Suspect is telling you how to read it. No, no, that line.
He was asleep in his car by the time we got up there. So I was like, I am sorry, man. Been a while.
I'll make a motion that we approve the advertising hire for another dispatch and deputy.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. What was the donations on the first?
Oh, yeah, forgot about, did you have that on here?
Yeah.
I didn't see that. So Ellen wanted me to talk to you guys. I've been having these people come in and hand me checks for donations to the Sheriff's Office. I had a $45 one, and I got a $200 one sitting on my desk.
Cool.
And I called Ellen, I said, what do I do with this? And I go, should I put it drug forfeiture? And she said, no. She thinks her opinion was to create, wrong word for, but a slush fund, like that we can put that money, so like, if we have training, I can get donuts for the deputies, or something like that, or for whoever, and stuff like that. She said it should be, they're donating to you, to you and the Sheriff's Office to use as you fit. So she was, they should create a fund, another line, whatever, that you can just deposit that and have access to, to...
Would that be a Jessica question?
Yeah.
I think that that would be a Jessica.
So I'm just, the first check, we didn't do drug forfeiture, because we didn't know, but then when I started, when I got this other one, I'm like, oh, hold on here, I better ask somebody before I...
Maybe we, well, you were putting on the, next week you were putting the thing on regarding funding and...
It was in an envelope on my desk, so I couldn't, you know. People seem to be happy. What's going on, so.
Well, people in Montana still kind of like their law enforcement, unlike Minneapolis.
And Seattle.
That's what I...
Portland.
Text from my daughter yesterday. Anyway, she said that they have number of shootings on her block this week. I'm going, it's time for you to get out of there.
Crazy.
I can't believe she's put up with this one.
Well, it's, she's, it's been pretty good where she's at, but now that there's no law enforcement in New York, that
And they don't need it.
It's just, you know, free-for-all, and so.
All right, so that was it?
I think so. Officially it for that stuff, yeah.
All right.
Who do I get for the Forest Service to get up Thompson Peak? Because I don't know any codes, and we can't find any keys.
Oh, I know what the code is.
You can whisper it to me later.
Huh?
You can get it to me later then. Because we want to drive up there, and then, I didn't know who to, I was just gonna reach the Forest Service, maybe you know the code to the gate.
Yeah.
But then isn't there a building, and don't I need a key to get in the building?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, there's a building, and there's a key to the building.
So I don't know where that...
I'll talk to Carol. Let me, let me talk to Carol and, and see if I can arrange something and maybe go up with you or whatever.
Yeah, because we had the radio guys here yesterday, which was a big waste of money, because when they got here, they couldn't do anything, and for our rate, they thought they had the right parts.
Did they try to go over there and talk?
No, they, that was second.
Oh, that was a waste of money.
At the end of the day, I said, hey, when are we gonna go there?
Oh.
And they go, well, you gotta arrange it. And I said, okay, so. They came here for us in the ambulance barn, and they were gonna do our Kenwood portables, and our Kenwood, we have a couple of Kenwoods in the cars. Well, they bought the cables, but their reader wouldn't work.
Oh.
So I go, so am I still getting charged? Boy, oh, we had to come.
Yeah, but there was their problem.
I understand this.
They had faulty.
I had the same argument.
Yeah, and so they got...
What am I gonna do? They got you. It's one of those, they got you. Because the other, the other radio place, they're worse. They won't even come. And then the next one is the one in Spokane.
I mean, I wonder if they would give you a reduction.
I'm hoping so. We'll see when we get the bill.
I'll send Carol the text and see if it's still the same code for the gate, and if they've got like the same code on the thing, and then I'll just give it to you.
Yeah, do. And then maybe I'll just drive up, see if the SUV can make it.
Oh, yeah, it should be.
That's what everybody said, it should be fine, so. All right.
All right, well, that concludes that. Thank you much, Mr. Sheriff Toth. So the agenda item at 9:50 is Jamie Talbot wage increase request for deputy clerk action.
Yes. So as I'm sure you remember, we had a couple of meetings before we posted the position for the deputy clerk discussing wages. It was posted to begin at $12 an hour and move up to 13 after successful completion of six-month probationary period. We hit that on May 2nd, and Brittany has proven to be an asset, I think, to the Fourth Judicial District and Mineral County. I get compliments from judges, attorneys. We're dealing with thousands of people right now with the questionnaires. She's done great, so I just ask that we give her that.
So the 60% request today is gonna equal 13, you say?
Well, Kellann figured it for me, and I think that the 60% would be 1305.
Okay.
It was posted at, as $13, I wasn't sure. I have the minutes from the meeting, and you guys, I think when you voted, it was 60%? Commissioner Simons' news.
On the backside, I think.
Yeah, 60%. So...
Revisit it six months for a wage increase of 60.
Which would be the 1305. It was posted at, in the job posting as 13, so, I mean, if you want to go with the 60, we're happy with that. If you feel like we have to go with the 13, because that's what it was posted, she's worth it.
Did, do you have, did you put that in? I don't remember reading the paper. Did the paper say 13?
I, I don't recall that, yeah.
I actually have, I do have that.
Oh, great.
Yep.
For mine. All right, what saves, what saves everybody?
Well, I think we've changed our policy to year probation now instead of six months. We're trying to get rid of the six-month probationary period.
Which would that have, as I understood that, it would have been from that moment forward, that you guys changed it?
Right, yeah.
Because, so she wouldn't be affected by it?
Right, but I mean, it's, I think we're close to budget time, and, I don't know, I just think it can be revisited at budget time.
Even though it was posted as six months?
Hmm?
Because we had discussed this, I think, in one of our meetings.
Yeah, and it said we would revisit it at six months.
Yeah.
So we are revisiting it.
Commissioner Simons, it was your motion. How did you understand your motion? Or what do you want to comment on?
Well, I think revisiting that budget time would be a good idea also.
So I understand that, what you guys are saying. I just think that in the posting, because it said that, I mean, is that, it says, after successful completion of six-month probationary period, that's what these people were applying, were under the impression of. I just feel like if we don't give them what the posting says, what they applied for, I mean, I don't plan on coming in here and, you know, asking for 10 more dollars at budget time. I just don't understand the...
So I kind of, I kind of see your point, Jamie, because all that ad, I'm kind of in agreeance with you. The only thing I will also, just to throw in, is that as commissioners, you know, with elected officials, we can't tell the sheriff what to do, we can't tell Kellann what to do. I mean, our only, our only control of, of trying to get things run as we want is the budget, you know? We control the budget. So when the public comes to us, they often think that we're, we're the kings, and we can just go in there and boss people around, which, you know, we cannot.
Sure.
And so I want to stick to what we said. If you're sensing any apprehension, I'm gonna speculate my only apprehension on just going done deal right away is because this is the only opportunity I have to kind of like say, when we make subtle suggestions that we need, you know, the offices open and people to not, like, I like Kellann and Casey, and they, it's a small town, a small community, and they like to go have lunch together, or go hike over the post office together. I want that to be Mayberry America. But then there's the guy that comes all the way down from the West End to go in there on his lunch break, and no one's there. Or maybe it's not his lunch break, maybe they all decide to go take a coffee break, or a smoke break, and he doesn't know where anyone's at.
Sure.
And so I'd like to, when I, when I talk to people with a friendly nudge, that, hey, let's try to make sure that the offices are open in lunch hour, or people don't hold hands together and go to the post office, and then the public doesn't know, you know, says be back soon. I've seen the sign that said be back soon up, not in anyone's office or... not in anyone's office in particular. And I, and I don't know when they're coming back. And I come back in fifteen minutes and it's still the same sign. Or they forget to change the sign. It says to the post office, be right back. And they're not at the post office. This was a day where one person was sick and the person's actually gone for an hour having lunch. So there's no communication to the public. There's, they don't understand. And then they call us and they go, what the heck? I drove all the way down here to route license my car or whatever their issue is. And there's nobody there. So.
Sure. And if I can speak to that. So last time we were at the department head meeting and you gave your gentle suggestion.
Right.
We actually have changed our lunches. So district court historically has been closed for the lunch hour. Kathleen, you know, was there, but the door was always shut. We have changed our schedules and even on our website, it says district court is closed from noon to one. It says on the county website. So we've changed that and we're staggering our schedules so that we are open through the lunch hour and can accommodate it. We don't leave notes that say be right back. Ours always have a time. You know, the county attorney's office is always, you know, if we run somewhere together, the county attorney's office keeps an eye on our office, texts us if somebody is up there where, I mean, we have taken your suggestions and we have changed our schedules.
They shouldn't be going anywhere together during office hours. I mean, somebody should be in there at all times.
Okay. I hear you.
Yeah. I mean, you might think that Melanie's there and they can see if someone comes. But sometimes Melanie is not there. I mean, then what? Is Ellen here through the door? I mean, I just.
I understand. I understand and I don't.
And because and then.
We're doing our best to accommodate and be available to the public.
And I'm trying to do my best to make sure that you guys still have a friendly work environment and you're friends and you can do things, just sparingly, please sparingly or only in situations where it's absolutely necessary. Like if Casey and Kellin have to go take five boxes of ballots over the post office, okay, that's why they're gone. The sign hopefully says we're at the post office, be right back. And that's what it means. Not, not people coming down and going, where the heck? I was here and I didn't know that Suzie was sick and that Jamie was on her lunch hour till one thirty today and I stood around and now I had to go back to work and now I didn't get my stuff done and now the lawyer's mad at me. I mean, so on.
No, yeah. I totally understand and I do hear your suggestions and I do take them, you know, personally. Like we've changed our schedule. I understand there are times where we'll have to look at that now. I, I get it. I hear what you're saying and I'm willing to do things to, you know.
So I actually got a compliment this week from someone who came into one of the offices and they came at lunch hour and they were, wow, the office is open. This is great. And so I know that the public does appreciate it. And of course, the state law says eight to five, it's open. It doesn't say, state law says nothing about being shut down for lunch hour. Maybe that did happen in the past and no one ever complained or I didn't know about it. But I know that I talked to a commissioner over in another county in the east and he was having that issue too. And he was asking Miko about the state law because, again, it's a small county in eastern Montana and people just think, oh, it won't hurt anything if we go have lunch. No one's going to come anyway. And then that's when someone comes.
Sure.
Well, I wanted to get that off my chest. And if, if you're hearing me loud and clear, don't leave, I mean, there's three of us here today, but when I saw the ad and when I saw the minutes that it says both times here, basically, like you said, it's kind of assuring you that this is what we're expected to do in six months, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you. Just after making that off my chest.
Yeah, I didn't know that that's what the ad said either. So.
But, but for the record or whatever, that there has been discussion that, so in law enforcement, highway patrol, sheriff's office, the probationary period is always one year. And so to get kind of in consistency and so memories and what, what is it in policy book, we are going to be going to one year probationary period. So that there's more time to observe and employ and more time before consideration of, of an increase after probation is necessary or granted. So, but I agree with you, Jamie, that all this discussion on these minutes and the ad even reflects that this was sort of the implied result after six months. So I'm in agree, in agreeance with you.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Well, as long as we're all in agreement, I would make a motion that.
Increase it to thirteen dollars an hour.
Increase it to thirteen bucks.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Or one?
Effective when?
When's the next payroll easier for you, Kellin?
Well.
Well, probably we should do her six month anniversary.
So that would have been.
That would be May 2nd.
May 2nd.
Yeah.
We want to do that.
Right. So retro to May two, what is, is May two a weird date on the calendar?
I can go back, hey? I can back there.
Okay. So you're okay if we make it effective?
Yeah.
Or, or doing it today, but making it, is that part of the motion, commissioners, May 2nd?
Yeah, it is.
On six month, okay.
I'm fine with that.
Retroactive to May 2 when her six month was hitting the calendar at six months, May 2nd. Now, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, that would take in this last pay period. Cause May 2nd was Sunday and so it was, today is the last day of this pay period. So it's.
Perfect.
Yep. So it will be this pay period. It works out perfect. So.
Great timing, Jamie.
Yep.
And Brittany, I don't get to see you much, but I hear the accolades from your boss. I hope that you enjoy your work and continue to do a good job.
I love it. Thank you guys. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit late. Ten oh five for the, ten o'clock. Sorry, stay there. Canvas and tents of the Alberton School, tent and canvas? Making a joke.
Missoula canvas.
Missoula canvas. Okay. Canvassing of the Alberton School trustee election action item, Kellin.
Going too fast here.
Oh, well.
So I have tally books. Do you guys want to look at the tally books?
Yeah, I would be, I'd be curious because I.
So these are hand counted. These were paper ballots. They're all hand counted.
By you guys?
Not by me or Casey, by Claudia, Deb and Jess Shaw came in.
Okay.
So there are the unofficial results. So this one was a little different because it was Alberton School. We had Missoula County and Mineral County voters. So we had to tally them separate and I had to get a voter list from Missoula County. It was, it was challenging. So I have Missoula tally books and then I have Mineral tally books.
Explain that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. How, how do you have Missoula County voters?
Because it's in Alberton School.
The district.
The district goes into Alberton or into Missoula County.
Patty Crick and Parton Island.
Okay.
So it was kind of unique because I was running the Alberton School, so which was Mineral County and Missoula County voters because the district.
Right, yeah.
So Missoula County was actually running Frenchtown Fire. So they had to deal with my voters. I think people were super confused.
Yeah, no kidding.
Because Mineral County voters were getting Missoula County ballots. Missoula County was getting Mineral County ballots. But there's really no other way to do it. Wow.
So why does, why does their school district go into Missoula?
I don't know. It just does.
It's gone that way forever.
I'm just wondering.
The, because school districts have a different, they go by population probably and proximities to schools. So like when I was growing up in Alberton, the, everything, we used to call it above the bridge when you go up the West Nam Mall Road and hit the bridge over the trick, everything above the bridge was Alberton and everything below the bridge was Frenchtown. And then of course, Petticrick's in Missoula County and it's much closer for Petticrick people to hit the school and to go to.
It was Frenchtown. It was, yeah. Never done it before. But it, it was okay. It worked out good.
Yeah. And then, and then whatever year the commissioners here had Frenchtown Fire become.
Yeah.
Up to Tarkier or Fish Creek or wherever. Yeah, then we, there's five people on that board. None of them are from Mineral County and those fire board people set our taxes and our rates.
Right.
And it's all done in Frenchtown because all the people are from.
Well, and not Bradley had said that there were three Mineral County voters. The reason why he had an election is because there were three write-ins and they were all from Mineral County.
Who, who said this?
The election administrator on Missoula.
Said that the, the Frenchtown, that the Frenchtown Fire had three writing people? I knew that there was one. I didn't know there's another.
He said there were three.
Wow.
But he ran that. He ran that one. So.
That was a close one, huh?
It was close.
Three votes on that one and one voter.
And we had about, we had a twenty percent turnout in Missoula County and a twenty-one percent turnout in Mineral.
These were all male?
Yeah. And I did build a school district for it. Yep, those are all, they're all hand counted. So two people can't, two people tally and one person reads.
Huh? Interesting. So the. Do you want just to recite?
Read the unofficial results, Sarah.
Okay. So the Alberton School District, School District number two had a school board election. There was one, a three-year term that was up with only one candidate, Brad Davis. Brad Davis received one hundred and eighty-two votes. Another term was a two-year term and there was two candidates, Karina Stanley and Laura Acker. Karina Stanley received one hundred and twelve and Laura Acker received five votes less, one hundred and seven. Karina Stanley won with a hundred and twelve. Twenty percent voter turnout. One thousand one hundred and thirteen ballots were sent out and two hundred and twenty-seven ballots were returned. Okay. Very interesting. And so Alberton's going to continue to have Mineral County do their.
All of the school districts are. They don't want to run them anymore.
And how do you feel about that?
I feel it's a lot of work.
Are you, do you get compensation when the schools do that?
I can, I have charged them for my materials, what it costs for election judges. And like I charged sixteen hours of Casey's wages. Can't charge for mine, but I can charge for hers. And I don't know, I'm going to talk to somebody about just, instead of making it all technical and, you know, charging for supplies, because I have to break it down by envelope, by pieces of paper, by stamp postage. If I could just charge a flat rate of like two dollars a voter, you know, if you have a thousand voters in your district, then I'll just do two dollars. I don't know if that's something I can look into, get that approved by you guys. But it is time consuming.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the Alberton School District unofficial results of May 4th, twenty twenty-one.
I would second that motion.
Oh, in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need this back?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Ten twenty. The agenda item at ten twenty here is request from the health department to hire for a summer short-term position. So Jen's not here, but she gave you the spiel of what this request is about?
She did. And it's for administrative support. It is short-term, meaning not more than ninety days in one year. The wage is ten dollars per hour and the wage source is a grant. The purpose, assistance is needed in billing, file management, catch-up on program activities, contact tracing as needed and other duties as assigned.
And this is a, which, which grant is this?
I didn't ask her which grant.
So there's no, no money from our budget for this short-term request?
Grant, wage source is grant. I'm happy to find that out for you, which grant.
Oh, I, I trust Jen. I just.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Next time I'll know. Yeah.
Re-verbalizing it. If there's no cost to the county and it's for her.
Yes.
Getting, and it's catching up on like COVID paperwork or what kind of?
Billing, file management, program activities, contact tracing.
Oh, contact tracing.
And other duties as assigned.
Well, I imagine they did get a little buildup with.
I would think.
All the vaccinations and all of that.
She said this morning, if we had any questions, feel free to call her.
Yeah.
Oh, you talked to her?
He saw her in the parking lot.
Oh, oh, that's right. You talked about the mouse mobile.
Yes. She was putting signs up and I said, no solicitors.
Wow. If it's not really going to impact our budget and I know she needs the help, I, ten dollars an hour, that's what the grant is offering?
Well, that's her starting wage that she's offering. So.
No health insurance?
Right. There's nothing, ninety days.
No benefits, no.
Well.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve Jen's request for a part-time temporary.
Short-term.
Short-term.
Position.
Short-term position at ten dollars an hour, coming out of one of her grants.
I would second.
A motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Okay. That concludes the. We have public comments and so we were just also talking, Sheriff. Have you, with the upcoming flea market?
So Monday, we're going to sit down with my under sheriff and the sergeant and we're going to.
Sergeant of the Highway Patrol?
Sergeant of the sheriff's office.
Oh, okay.
And we're going to start coming up with a plan. Because we hear the, we're going to confirm that the fire department is going to run traffic at the four-way.
I hope so.
If not, we will. But hopefully they will. So we can respond to calls and everything else. And then my plan would be to at least have two guys walking around inside the flea market. And then one to two guys driving around St. Regis, just being visible in patrol cars. And then one or two guys taking calls for the rest of the county. So that'll be a pretty overtime weekend, just so you guys know that. Because they'll have to come in other days off.
So will that kind of coverage, two walking, two driving and two taking calls, still provide for a couple on night shift when all the people leave the flea market and go into the, the night.
That's the rub. That's where the overtime is going to be. Because then someone will continue working into the night shift. We'll have to look to see what numbers we have.
Have you been to a flea market before? Like.
Years, years ago.
Do they need one guy walking around or two guys?
I would think one would be.
One would be.
We could do one, but we do two, but they don't need to be there the whole time either. Maybe, maybe they could be the driving.
Yeah.
Maybe we could just say.
Maybe be the same guy.
Drive around and then stop, get out, walk around.
Kick them out and jump up.
You know, stretch your legs and then come back in.
Yeah, there's never anything there.
Real problem. Right.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes they question the guns that are put out and stuff. You know, I, I don't think there's anything.
I've never been to one. My son has, but I haven't.
I went there with Johnson years ago. I think we even bought some things while we were there. Like some candy or something with.
Well, I just didn't want you to overdo.
Omni has a good food deal there. They got the best cheeseburgers there at the, at the concession stand in the world.
I didn't want you to overdo it and then find out that you didn't need that many and you could have used them better elsewhere.
So, yeah, commission, well, if I underdo it, you get mad at me about that and you yell at me.
No, I've never gotten mad at you.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. If the one or two that are driving around are probably the same two, pop in there.
So, so that's what we'll do.
They'll get bored too if they.
Well, of course.
But there might be a parking issue. Then the guy.
Plus you got me and Wayne on the weekends will come in. The only thing I'm thinking of is now that, to change this, now that the law changed about the sheriff's office wage and that, because Wayne, I can raise him up a little more if I want to. And I was going to talk to him about that, but can't we? I swear to God, Hugh Hoplin, when he was under sheriff, he was salary. And I think Ernie's the one that changed it for Boone. Because Boone wanted more money to be under sheriff. So that's why they made it hourly and he could get overtime. So I want to look into what's the possibility he's making under sheriff salary again. Because if he did have the things I need him to do, we couldn't, it'd be, he'd be twenty, twenty hours overtime a week almost. So I'd like to get him back to salary. If that's a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't stick out in my mind. Yeah, it doesn't stick out in my mind, but it could be.
Well, I'm going to, I should talk to Hugh. Ask Hugh. I thought that's what happened and then that Ernie switched Boone to hourly instead to help Boone out.
I don't remember that either.
Do you remember under sheriff being salaried?
Under sheriff?
Yeah.
I thought it could only, the only... Only administrative...
She is.
Can be salary.
Well, he's administrative.
Well, yeah, we have to check with Mako. Yeah, because we, because we thought about doing, remember Ronnie administrated or saying, well, she's administrative, let's make her salary and then we couldn't.
Yeah, there's some kind of a formula thing with hours and pay and I don't know how it works.
Yeah, there's a certain criteria that puts you into administrative.
And we just did that with Brandon, didn't we?
Yeah.
You wanted to put him salary, yeah.
No, didn't put him salary.
No, no, but you asked to. Everybody asked to and we found out what the law was and couldn't. But I had, I only stuffed in, I'm sorry, because I had some administrative stuff I needed to ask.
This is public comment, so I can say whatever I want.
I'll wait till administrative business.
But back to the flea market, so when you mentioned you and the under sheriff and the sergeant, sergeant funk of your department, yeah.
And then now we'll probably just pick two guys that work St. Regis.
Okay. But speaking of sergeants, I wonder if, in the flea market and in the town, well, not the incorporated town, but the town of St. Regis is one thing, but the interstate with, my colleague tells me that construction zone is a real danger for the interstate.
So, I was going to call the captain. When I leave here, I'll call the captain of highway patrol and say, are you aware of this is going to be going on? Are we taking measures?
Is the sergeant of highway patrol over here right now?
Not today.
Not today. So, yeah, definitely they need to be on their toes because...
And they should be on 135 working. And anywhere there's an accident in St. Regis, side street, back street, whatever, that's highway patrol call, right? Because it's not a incorporated town.
Right. The highway patrol has jurisdiction of accidents anywhere in the state with the exception of incorporated cities or towns, which then they default to the own, their own police department. Now, Superior opts not to have their own police department. They contract with you, so you're the police department for Superior, so that would be...
I get that.
Yeah.
But not St. Regis though.
And Alberton, yeah. Not St. Regis, not Hoggan, not Salty's.
We don't have any laws down there.
I was about to call it Sin City.
That's right.
Yeah.
I heard they're going to reopen the OK Cafe as a restaurant again.
I don't know.
It'd be nice.
I think it's under new ownership, but I don't know if it'll be as a restaurant.
Think they would. I used to, we used to eat in there.
Oh, God, yeah.
Late at night, two, three in the morning, going?
It was great when Jack Lane...
That's when highway patrol would work nights, actually.
That was great when Jack Lane first opened.
Danoff would meet me from plane and I'd go meet him there.
Just have to look to see who's cooking as you walked in. Oh, I rested him yesterday. Better not eat. Just give me a piece of pie.
Give me a piece of pie. Well, any other comments from the public or...
Hey, whatever happened with the park walk-through or whatever, airport walk you did?
Yeah, I did it.
What's that look like? What's that going to be like?
Oh, it's basically on the old Milwaukee grade and it kind of starts down there by the meat shop in the Superior Septic there and it just, the, the feds normally don't, are kind of picky about things they allow going through the airport and they were, according to the chairman of the board out there at the airport, that the FAA was agreeable to letting a walking path go down and through the airport and out. And then down at the end of the airport, there's a nice little bench down low by the river and they were thinking, and that's county land too, that possibly it could be a picnic area or, you know, camping area and...
So, how would they walk through the airport? They would put a gate on the fence?
Yeah, so currently airports are fenced, but like the FAA told the airport board that the fence isn't to keep people out, it's to keep animals out. You know, you don't want to land a plane and hit a moose. But, so they said people can walk through there as long as they're fully aware that they can't be on the runway and you have a, a gate, for lack of a better word, a turnstile or something where people can get through, but animals cannot. So, then you could, and, and then the idea might be in the future that they could make, no one likes to just walk one place and go back. So, it could be a loop, so you could start down by the Superior Septic, walk the grade, go through the airport, stop and have lunch or walk your dog down by the river and then loop back to the Superior Septic area where there could be a parking area via maybe a DOT, because that's highway department, land along Old Highway 10, Mullen Road. Maybe there could be a walking path for the return route. It's just kind of an idea and they were thinking of utilizing some monies to make that. Because a lot of people like to walk their dogs now. There's not really a place, destination or a loop to...
Well, I wish the city could get that guy to sell that from here that goes to the Big Eddie.
Big Eddie.
And pave that.
And that'd be a good spot too.
And he could say the Superior River Walk or something. That guy, I guess, won't sell that.
Well, good. Well, I'm glad you're thinking ahead on the old flea market. Otherwise, I'd be able to comment publicly or non-publicly to comment to the sheriff. Well, best of luck on that weekend.
I guess.
Okay. I guess lunchtime.